You're watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the November 20th meeting of the La Porte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county.org.
Welcome, welcome everyone to the La Porte County Board of Commissioners meeting, Wednesday, November 20th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order if everyone could stand for the pledge allegiance and if we could have Rich Licky start the pledge for us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner, Commissioner Rosinski.
Present.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Present.
Commissioner Haiti, present, all three present.
Consider approval of November 6, 2024, meeting minutes?
Um, agenda?
Consider agenda.
Uh, Madam President, tonight, I'd like to add to the agenda, consider the Surneck Stables lawsuit and also appointment to the Shared Ethics Committee. And I would make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Mr. Rosinski, can I ask you to add one more matter?
No.
Under old business?
Sure.
A discussion regarding the small animal shelter?
Discussion for the small animal shelter, I would add that. Second, I want you to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
What were the other two, the um, small animal, the shared ethics?
And the lawsuit, the latest lawsuit.
Lawsuit. Is it also under new business, correct? So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Give me a second just to get this, 12 F and 12 G. Okay, consider approval of November 6, 2024 minutes?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of claims, beginning with payroll.
Payroll Commissioners for two different periods, the period ending 11/1/2024 is in the amount, is in the amount of $1,486,591.35. And for the period ending November 15th, 2024, to the amount of $1,526,968.57. Motion to approve payroll is presented, second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 And then if I may, operating expense claims would be in the amount of $1,608,369.91. Motion to approve operating expense claims, second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we have a presentation, we have a special group up here and it's the Civil Air Patrol. They have a group here in Michigan City that they've started and it's a wonderful program. And we figured we would give them an opportunity to come up here and do a presentation and talk a little bit about what they do. So come on up.
Good evening, my name is John Kiper, I'm the commander of the Michigan City Squadron, which we just started last June. So we're a very young squadron, we're already at 35 members between cadets and senior members. Civil Air Patrol is an auxiliary of the Air Force. And so we do a lot of our structure and everything under Air Force rules and regulations. Our main, well, Civil Air Patrol started December 1st, seven days before Pearl Harbor. We've been around that long. And originally it was private pilots flying single-engine airplanes off the coast looking for German submarines and different patrol boats and that kind of stuff, it was a bunch of volunteers. It was, they would fly out over the ocean, find the sub, radio it in, and we actually, at one point they were putting bombs on Cessna tail-dragging airplanes that they would go out and drop on these submarines. I have a picture from National Legislative Day when we were at Washington DC at the Civil Air Patrol's National Museum out there that they have. And they actually came out with one of the shell casings of one of these bombs that they dropped. And I got a picture of one of the cadets going, aye. Anyway, totally off track. Our main course or action now is we provide the emergency services. So after Katrina hurricanes, we put aircraft in the air to do reconnaissance for damage, looking for survivors and that kind of stuff. Aerospace education, our cadet program is one of the major things of what we focus on now. And if Major Van Drummond would come up, I'd like, he's one of our PR officers, explain a little bit more about intricacies of.
So I am Lieutenant Colonel Bill Van Drummond, the La Porte Commander, the La Porte Senior Squadron. We have an airplane that's actually based here at the airport. The airplane kind of comes and goes depending on needs for the Civil Air Patrol. It's mostly here. We do some events with the Air Force, the Air Force has a program called Ready Pilot Preparatory Program. So every now and then they take an airplane from here, they move it down to Indianapolis or Columbus, and then they use it to get Air Force qualified, potentially qualified pilots to a position where they have enough points to actually be in a pilot slot. And that generally revolves around them getting a private pilot certificate. So Civil Air Patrol will work with these individuals, mostly enlisted members, get them enough points, right? Then they can get their pilot slot, the Air Force gets the pilot they want, and then we get the airplane that we want. So here at the La Porte Squadron, we've done missions with the Indiana Department of Homeland Security. Or we had flown during the eclipse, right, we had flown basically up and down the major highways looking for traffic issues. And in that instance, we used all of the airplanes that we have in the Indiana Wing. We, a little more than a year ago, assisted our peers in the Michigan Wing Civil Air Patrol, where an individual took his plane up for a flight on Sunday and then they couldn't find him. So they pulled the airplane here from the port and then we ended up flying search and rescue patterns to search for him. And that was September of last year. So our missions vary, those are kind of the real-world missions that we get assigned from either the Civil Air Patrol directly, which is us working with Homeland Security, or the Civil Air Patrol working as a, as a component of the Air Force being auxiliary, right? Which is what we were doing when we were assisting Michigan Wing. So those are real-life missions, the search and rescue part of what we do. But we also do a lot, and I would say much more, teacher orientation flights where we fly teachers, individuals who are educators. And it doesn't necessarily have to be purely an educator, it could be librarians or even homeschooled educators. Could get flights with us as part of a teacher orientation program flight, where we could take them up and basically show them how the airplane works and the science behind it, things like that. So teacher orientation flights, we also do a significant amount of cadet orientation flights. And for cadet orientation flights, that's basically us flying local squadron cadets, like you see standing here behind me or sitting behind me. And we'll take a Saturday, mostly a Saturday because of school, of course, and we'll take all day and we'll just get five, six, seven cadets, get them in the airplane and teach them the science of flight. Right, so they have a syllabus, they actually work their way through their syllabus, they get five front seat rides. So they can get those as they're kind of progressing through their, their career track in the Civil Air Patrol. And then they get as many backseat rides as we could possibly give them. And of course, those flights are all coordinated through the wing, which is basically, wing is the state. But they're done nationwide, Civil Air Patrol's in all 50 states. So in this case, we might get a request for cadet orientation flights from the Valparaiso Squadron, the Michigan City Squadron. And since our focus in the port is purely the airplane, so we're a senior-only squadron, so senior in Civil Air Patrol means basically adult. So our focus is on that airplane and then getting that airplane to these, these events that need to be covered, whether they're assisting the state of Indiana, assisting the federal government, assisting the Air Force, or assisting with Civil Air Patrol cadet orientation flights. So like we have a cadet orientation flights coming up, we'll take the airplane from the port and we'll fly it to Valparaiso. We have another one coming up potentially in Griffith for our Lake County Squadron. And we try to do that as much as we can, they're about, how many cadets are there now in the Civil Air Patrol Indiana Wing?
Oh, Indiana?
It's about 600?
Yeah, it's almost 700.
Yeah, so we're picking up more cadets and, you know, we want to fly as many of those cadets as possible. And we also want to fly, I mean, the airplane's here, it's in La Porte, it's, you know, it, we want to use it. So that goes for, you know, finding teachers so that they get teacher orientation flights, but working with the EMA, right, working with whoever it is that we could actually assist, right? So I'll leave maybe the rest for you. Yeah, but if anybody has any questions about the Civil Air Patrol, particularly the La Porte Squadron, yeah, just let me know, I'd be happy to answer the questions. Thank you.
The other thing that he touched on, Civil Air Patrol aircraft, after 9/11, it was a Civil Air Patrol airplane that was the first one over Ground Zero. That airplane is now at Wright Patterson Air Force Museum over in Dayton, Ohio. It was just put there here a year ago. Our other focus that we were talking about is cadet programs. It teaches young individuals leadership, character development, integrity, aerospace education. And as I say, this is my 11th year in Civil Air Patrol to run into cadets from eight, nine years ago. Their now jobs, careers, families, and see how much farther ahead they are than their classmates. And it's like, we're having an impact on today's youth. So I would like to bring Arabella. She is our current high-ranking cadet and has done an amazing job in starting as being the cadet to putting our group together and so this is.
Good evening, I am Cadet Arabella Wenzlet. I am a Chief Master Sergeant and the Cadet Commander of the Michigan City Squadron. These are my cadets, if you guys could come up and introduce yourselves, please.
Stand up, guys.
Come on. Come on, come on. Come on up and tell us your name. And tell us how long you've been in, in, in the group.
My name is Matt Rickbeagle, I've been in the group for about three months.
Okay. Next.
My name is Landon Perry, I've been in the group probably about two months.
My name's Ariana Kraszewski and I've been in the group for like maybe a month.
My name's Hannah Turner and I think I've been in it for about a month.
I've been in it for about four years. I started off in Valparaiso Squadron and I heard that we were making a new squadron, so I shifted my attention to the Michigan City Squadron and make sure that all of my cadets are getting everything that they need to promote. I teach them how to wear their uniform properly, I go over drill with them, so we do a lot, I'm very proud of them, they're doing great. For this small amount of time that they've been in Civil Air Patrol, I am very proud of my cadets.
So, one of the things that we teach is small unit leadership. So we have a group of new cadets, when you first start, you're learning. And it's like, oh, this is strange, you know, well, you get a couple of promotions and you've learned a little bit and it's now, oh, help with the newer cadets. So you get to help that cadet and you get your promotions and you get, the next thing you know, several months or a year down the road, you're leading a flight, a squadron, and it's like, how did I get here? And it's the small unit leadership, that you don't just take charge, there's a difference between a boss and a leader. A boss tells you what to do, a leader inspires you, so that's what we're after. Nina, would you like to do the, the other thing that we're working on is Wreaths Across America?
Hello, everyone, my name is Lieutenant Gina Pedrak, I am the Health and Health Services and Safety Officer for the Michigan City Squadron, I also was part of Valparaiso, and I've been with Civil Air Patrol for five years, I joined when my kids joined and then when my kids left, I stayed on because it's such a great program. So with part of Wreaths Across America, it is an approved program through Civil Air Patrol. Wreaths Across America has been in existence since 1992, their goal was to put a wreath on these servicemen and women in Arlington National Cemetery to honor those who have given their, given their lives for our country. And it's become such a great program that in 2007, Wreaths Across America has become a nonprofit, which helps sponsors several little, like little organizations such as ourselves. So over $17 our wreath can be sponsored, out of that $17, $5 comes back to our squadron to help with our cadet programs. Again, because we do so many cadet programs, we do our best for fundraising to see if we can try to offset the account for parents and such, to make it more of a program for cadets to be for and can help ease the parent's burden of financial. And also in addition to that, we also across, Wreaths Across America supports over 4,000 cemeteries that are part of this program that get wreaths to it. So our National Wreath Day is actually December 14th, and you can actually go online or you can also Google it, they actually see this in live, they do do a live streaming of the service. So any wreath that's sponsored up until December 1st will get any donations. However, after December 1st, you can still keep sponsoring for Wreaths Across America for next year. And we sponsor the Indiana, the wreaths sponsor the Indiana Veterans Home down in Lafayette. And so it's a great experience, it teaches the children about freedom, civics and such, and to see a cadet lay a wreath at a servicemember's grave is a moving experience. And again, it makes it really easy, you got the little QR code right here, you can take your phone and scan it, you can go and you can sign up. Also, if you don't, if you don't want to sponsor that cemetery, you can go through the listings of different cemeteries to sponsor a wreath for. And if you don't see your cemetery on there, you can go through Wreaths Across America at Mathieu Cemetery to be added onto the list for next year. Any questions about that or anything? Because I am the representative from that group or this for my squadron.
So what we did was, I ran off quite a few copies, I wanted you to come and do the presentation, and then we're going to get them spread out throughout our county buildings and then hopefully, you know, the employees and people that come through can see them and then we can pass them out for you as well.
Any, any help, thank you so much, any help would be grateful, even if you just purchase one wreath, that's just, it's just in honor of a veteran. I purchased three in addition to my dad and my father-in-law and my uncle, who had both served in Vietnam. So any, any help would be greatly appreciated and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The other thing, touching on the aviation and all that, through the Wings Program, which is a scholarship program that we have through Civil Air Patrol, we have had over, we have had 256 cadets go from an orientation ride where they got to ride in the airplane and drive it, to receiving their private pilot's license through Civil Air Patrol. That is one of the things, being an auxiliary of the Air Force, working with that. But it also is showing career and what we can do there. Chris West, we'll talk about encampment. And that is one of the first things that as a cadet to go to encampment, it's a week away from home. And the amazing thing is the difference between a cadet on Sunday, Monday, when everybody joins, and Friday, Saturday at the end of the week, it's like a herd of cats on Sunday, it's like, where did these guys come from?
Thank you, my name is Chris West. My daughter and I and my wife joined Civil Air Patrol in May and it's been an awesome experience. So one of the things that we heard about was encampment and, you know, going down and trying to understand a little bit more about how to embrace Civil Air Patrol and what our part is and how we can help out. So we weren't actually able to make it to Indiana's encampment, every state, every wing does an encampment. Unfortunately, we weren't able to make it to Indiana, so we went down to Biloxi, Mississippi, to Keesler Air Force Base and got to do a week's worth of training. And as, as adults, we're there to make sure the kids kind of stay on track, but it's a, it's a youth-led program. That's what Civil Air Patrol is, it's a youth-led program, we're just there to make sure everything kind of stays on the rails, right? So one of the things that we got to do, so again, as Captain Kiper talked about, day one when they arrive, kids don't know what to expect, think of this as a mini basic training, I mean, that's essentially what it is. Door opens up, kids getting yelled at, screamed at, you know, grab your bags, get on the wall and address me as sir, salute. And, you know, again, as Captain Kiper talked about, they're, they're disorganized and bumbling as, as they go through, first day, second day. But as they get to the third and fourth days, they're starting to look more cohesive, look like a unit, and it's very impressive to see and witness. So that was my first experience doing something like that and quite amazing to see. One of the highlights of the week was we had 150 cadets that were at this, this encampment. We got to ride on a C-130, so went along the Alabama Islands and got to see some amazing scenery. And the scene of smiles on the cadet's face was, was definitely worth it. So we are a 501(c)(3) charity, so a lot of the, the things that we do are all by donation. The uniforms that the cadets wear, we're paying for those, the cadets are paying for those out of pocket, the senior member uniforms. So our first year for, for a family of three was about $1,200 in cost for, for uniforms and, and all of the equipment and materials that we needed to, to be prepared. So again, keep in mind that we're a 501(c)(3) charity, we're looking for donations, we're looking for help and we appreciate anything that you guys can offer, so thank you very much, appreciate it.
So that wraps up, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to come and, and share with you, you know, what we do. And I do believe that we have a positive effect on the community and today's youth. And seeing, as I say, cadets from some time ago, even, I worked with Lafayette Squadron on Sunday, I'm up here on Tuesday, I'm the Director of Operations for the drone program for the Indiana Wing, so I run all over the state doing training there, and it's a volunteer organization. So I just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity and we look forward to seeing what we can do for the community.
I want to ask you.
Yes.
I want to ask you a quick question, what, how many students currently do you have from Michigan City or La Porte County in, in your program currently?
Right now there are 14 cadets, as I say, we just started in June and we are in the process, one reaching out to the schools. Okay, we have the STEM kits, so if we go into a school and get a teacher that signs up as an AEM Aerospace Education teacher, they can get, it's $35 a year and they can get STEM kits. So they can get telescopes, robots, drones, weather stations, all these different STEM kits. And the whole, the way it works is they apply for a STEM kit, they get it, they do it, it comes with a lesson plan, all this kind of stuff. They have to do an after-action report of how they used it, how many students, all this, send that in, they can get another one. If they don't send that in, they're done. But reaching out to, through the schools, my analogy always, if you have a student or a cadet that goes to a school, they talk to their friends, if you have a teacher in the school, they talk to their students. So that's one of the things, working, you know, reaching out to the schools and getting involved, homeschool even. Valparaiso Squadron, probably 60% of their cadets are homeschool. So, but that's our main focus is to grow the cadet squadron and we have 35 total members, so we're more seniors than cadets, but that's our goal is to get more cadets, so.
Personally think that's a wonderful thing for the younger citizens to get involved in. You won't see any of these kids on the police platter, it's, it's a, it's a good thing. Having served in the Air Force myself, when you talked about basic training, that was a good time. Vietnam was even more fun. But I, I didn't really know how the Civil Air Patrol was doing. Except years ago when you, we had a meeting out at the airport, I was there, you're talking about getting an airplane at that time. And now you have one and wow, what a, what a definitely worthwhile thing. Very, very excited about that.
Well, as I say, I've been, this is my 11th year, I joined by accident, you know, so. But just referring to one of my former cadets from a long time ago, we're getting ready to do orientation rides. And anyway, Hayden's like, oh, I don't think I want to fly in an airplane, you don't have to, just come to the airport and see, you know, all that. So we do our orientation, the pilot explains, you know, pre-flight, we send the first group up. Generally in orientation ride, you'll put two cadets, one front seat, back seat. They fly to another airport, get a, they'll change front and back seat, so the backseat cadet now gets to set up front and drive. Anyway, the second, first flight comes back, we send the second one, getting ready to send the third one, I says, do you want to go? Well, okay. He got in, takes off, came back, when he got out of the airplane, he literally had a smile from ear to ear, it's like, wow, you know. I ran into this former cadet a couple of months ago at Walmart. He's now graduated high school, is a full-time college student, he also has a full-time job with a construction company, but not in the hammer and nails department, he's in the design department. And he's also a full-time firefighter on our local fire, volunteer fire department. He's completed all of his MAC training and everything else, I'm like, this was a shy kid, you know. So I do believe we can have an impact on today's youth. And I was a police officer for 14 years in a previous life and in my twenties and thirties, it made no sense to me that if a kid screwed up and they're on this side of the line and now you throw them in with the bad kids, not the ones that made a mistake. And it's like, they need a like support group, you know, and it's coaching in the right direction. You're not yelling, get over here, it's like, are you sure you want me doing that, you know, so anyway.
Thank you, thank you.
It's cool that they got it right on a C-130, that's, of course, they probably didn't have the inside Starboard engine get hit by something blow up. That was exciting, but what a great experience for, for youth.
We do national legis, I've done five trips National Legislative Day to Washington DC. We're part of the Air Force, so our budget comes out of that, so we go out and talk with our senators and congressmen. Two year, we do the wreath ceremony in Arlington, presenting the wreath for the tomb of the Unknown Soldier. One year we go onto Andrews Joint Air Force Base and we're at the First Officers Club and they're doing presentations for us. They put us on a bus, take us out onto a hangar out on the field and we're out there and they're showing us some stuff. The hangar opens up, they pull Air Force Two, the backup plane for Air Force One, into the hangar, plug the power supply in, drive the stairs up, and we had the Ron of Air Force Two, the backup plane, for a couple hours. Pilots, we've got pictures of the cadets sitting in the cockpit with it fully lit up going. So anyway, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You know, I would like to thank, there's three individuals that I see in the audience, they're local people. And that's Sherry, Pat Vance, Richard Licky. I'd like to thank you guys because you're from our community and you're here and you're helping our children out. There is John Stemley, and I'm sure that there's going to be a lot more people that I missed that are part of this. And, and we don't publicize this, we don't, we don't. We don't, we don't, you know, sometimes in our society, we just kind of look at the negative. And this is such a beautiful program. It's local, we have our children in these programs. And I am so grateful that we have community members out there really recruiting and getting our children into these programs to give them a positive outlook in life. And I just can't thank you enough. So thank you.
Mr. D. Martino, I'd like to ask before I ask for a motion from our members, is it too late? Because like, we were able to give a little bit of our money to another organization that helped children in Michigan City. Would it, is it too late to make a motion to go to the council and ask for, you know, a couple thousand dollars to be able to help this organization as well?
It's not too late. I'd make that motion.
I'd second that.
Well, we'd be the dollar hots.
Yeah.
Well, right, you'd have to come in with a dollar amount, and then I would need information from them as to their program, which I think I would either 501(c)(3) information, and then it could be heard by the council. And then they have to commit. We're going to have to have a meeting in December in order to appropriate or obligate the monies.
Okay.
And so I would make that motion at the amount of up to $5,000.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second for $5,000 to go towards this organization?
Just one thing, Madam President. It's going to have to be for educational program or to sponsor somebody, you know, their dues or their uniforms in need. It'll have to be for things along those lines.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So you're granted permission to go to the council, and we'll give you the information in the upcoming weeks for you to go to the council and then see if they can appropriate those funds for you. Thank you so much. So we're going to call a five-minute recess, just so we can take a picture, and then they can exit the room, and we'll continue with the meeting. Do we have a motion for a five-minute recess?
Motion to five minute, six-minute recess.
Okay, thank you.
Take a picture. Joel, let's take a picture of all.
Sure.
Thank you, everyone, coming back from our recess. So we'd like to continue, and we'll go right into public comment. Do we have anyone for a public comment?
Good evening. Steve Hallfield, 6782 East 100 South Mill Creek. I was asked to bring this to your guys' attention, and possibly you might be able to help them or recommend or something. Not tonight, or if you could pass it on. The Mill Creek Lions Club is putting together a program for donations. They're trying to put together honor flights for veterans, to get them to DC, to show them the memorials and everything else. They're expensive flight, they're $675. They're reaching out. If you guys know of anybody, they can contact me, and I'll pass it on to Emily Howard and Mike Burby. They're the ones pushing for this. It's a tremendous honor for these veterans. Some of them, they can't, they can't drive themselves, so this is a way to get those veterans there. I believe, Ms. Grammer, you've been on a flight or two?
I have.
Yeah, it's an amazing program. So I just want to pass it on for them. So if you have the information or questions they can ask me.
Go in April.
Yep, all right. Back to you, Mike, and say one, they're doing that, I think. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Public comment.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andrew Skiat, 1655 North Sheeble Road, Michigan City. I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Haney on his recent election win. We look forward to your leadership for four more years. And I'd like to thank Commissioner Mazinski for his multiple years, I don't know how many, of service for the people in the county. I would humbly ask for your permission tonight to have a few minutes to speak as a resident of Lepore County with no representation or affiliation of Markless Electric or Lepore County Project Management. Would that be acceptable?
Yes.
Thank you. Recently, I had Attorney Anthony Novak. He petitioned the Lepore County Plant Commission to appropriately rezone my farm from residential to the proper agricultural zoning. I will be in front of Commissioner Haney next Tuesday as President of the Planting Commission. Almost immediately after that agenda was released, this post came up on social media. It reads.
You didn't have to come up and.
This post came up on social media. It reads, "The elites in the Lepore County sure know how to play the system. Millions handed over in no-bid contracts, and what do they do with it? Snag themselves a $2 million farm for pigeon racing, of all things. And just look at those property taxes, sliced from $15,000 a year in 2021 to a laughable $6,000 in 2023. Now they're pushing the Plant Commission to rezone it from residential to agricultural, aiming to cut those taxes even lower." So, and then that post was followed by this post that states, "We don't spread misinformation, we spread missing information." And unfortunately, all those posts were made anonymous. So I'm not on social media, but when I was sent that post, I thought, my taxes got cut. Christmas, what'd I do to deserve that? So I got to look into this, so I reached out to Auditor Stavos. And here is my old residence, which I moved from to move into 1655 Sheeble. I never in my life on this residence filed a homestead exemption, zero, which every resident of Lepore County is entitled to. Never filed that. When I purchased the new residence in 2023, the title company checked the box, will this be your primary residence? Yes. Homestead, yes. And they told me at closing, that will not take effect. You need to file this yellow paper in the auditor's office. I never filed the yellow paper, never asked for a homestead, never asked to have my taxes lowered. Thankfully, the auditor's office runs a tight ship. Thank you. And they went through the filings and saw that the title company checked those boxes, saw that I did not have a homestead, and that's how my taxes got lowered. So the post implies that I'm petitioning to get my taxes lowered. I never asked to have my taxes lowered. I never asked, never even filed my homestead exemption on either residence. That's the true information. Then the post claims that, they make it like, all this was purchased with the accusations of the no-bid contracts. The real information is I've actually been acquiring adjoining property for 13 years, all the way back to 2011. So this property was purchased in 2011. The adjoining property was purchased in 2016. The other adjoining property was purchased in 2018. Somewhere around here, I would have built a house on this farm, but the land meant so much to me, I did not want to tarnish that land and develop it. In 2023, the neighbor calls and says, "Do you want to buy my property? I'm moving to Florida. But if you want my property, you have to buy the house." I said, "I would love your house, because I've dreamed of living on that land. I never wanted to disrupt that land for future generations. Now I can live out my dream and live out the land with protecting it for future generations of Lepore County." That is how I ended up at 1655 North Sheeble. Then the claims of all this is about getting taxes cut. Here's the real missing information. All the way back in 2019, on these parcels, here was my receipt where I paid to have 3,000 white oaks and 4,000 white pines planted on that farm to improve our air quality and protect that agriculture land for future generations. In 2019, here's my receipt where I spent $13,716 to control exotic invasive plants and make sure all plants on those farms were native to our area in Indiana. Here is my Office of Indiana State Chemist pesticide applicator permit. That is the exact same permit that farmers in this county use to farm for a living. To the right is your private pesticide applicator permit. It allows you to purchase and apply restricted-use pesticides to produce agricultural commodities on property that you can control. I definitely do not have a pesticide applicator permit that expires in 2029 to try to get my taxes lowered. Here is a letter from our state forester, Andrew Skiat, Order Parcel 46052730002000046, blah, 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 is currently managing all of his property for timber production. He has planted 29,000 trees on his non-forested fields over the last year and will continue planting in the spring of 2025 with another 36,000 trees. If 65,000 trees that I'll never live long enough to see mature and harvest is not a statement that this property is being used for agricultural reasons, I don't know what else is. Here are all my seed licenses, where I've signed seed signature agreements with the farm companies for seed usage to go. with the farm companies for seed usage to go along with the pesticide applicator permit. The property will be here, the dirt, way before all of us. It'll be here way after all of us are gone. I personally purchased three developed pieces of property and undeveloped them, returning them to an agricultural state, which I will never develop in my lifetime, so future generations in this county can enjoy that agricultural land and natural beauty. It's been one of my missions to protect this property to the extent where I wasn't even going to live on it in my lifetime to make sure that it remained in the state it was for the next generation. It doesn't matter if you farm vegetables, corn, beans, hay, livestock. I am all for keeping that land intact so that other generations can enjoy it. And I think it was a big insult by whoever made an anonymous post to make accusations of something they didn't know when it's completely untrue. So as the leaders of our county and as the President of the Plant Commission, before I come before you next Tuesday, I want to take a minute of your time to tell my true story.
You know, I...
Thank you.
And again, I truly apologize and, you know, there is so much misinformation that's spread. And, you know, we can look around a room and we can figure out who these people are. You're never gonna stop them. Haters will be haters. You're doing a fabulous thing for our county. I thank you tremendously, you know. It's a shame. These are people that don't do anything to benefit our county, and yet here you are doing things to help our county. And not only professionally, personally, you're looking at our lands. I know that you purchased a lot, you know, you own other pieces of property and you've done a lot environmentally. And I thank you for it. And just because you get some people who are haters, don't think that everybody doesn't acknowledge the fact of all the good that you do, because there's a lot of us out there that do believe that you do a lot for the nature, for the county, through your businesses. You help us a lot and I personally appreciate what you do for us. Thank you.
And I think it's a shame when you got somebody as upstanding citizen like yourself who does so much for the community, so much for the people and for the county. And one of the most upstanding, good guys that I've ever met in my life. I value your friendship. And to have these haters who are cowards, unanimous, or anonymous, they call themselves, because they won't come to your fate today. They talk bad about us all the time. If they don't have the guts to come and talk to my face, I wish they would. I'd love to have that conversation, but they're gutless trash. And I don't know why we gotta have people like that, but I guess we do. But you certainly don't deserve for what they talked about you. Well, actually, none of us do, but I'm proud to know you.
Thank you for your time.
Andy, if you wouldn't mind, the tree planting stuff like that. I don't recall if I saw that in our packet, but the agricultural side of it. You could take one or two of those pages and email them to Plant Commission Secretary Ashley.
Absolutely.
So they can be in our thing, just showing the agricultural use and stuff that you've done. What I saw in the packet looks pretty straightforward, but that would probably help with the rest of the board as well.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
And it's a shame that a citizen has to come up here and defend themselves like this. Again, you know, it's one thing when they're coming after political figures, but it's a shame when they come after residents.
They're good at lying. That's all about, the only thing they're good at.
So any other public comment?
Good evening. Tim Short, lifelong resident, LaPorte County, Will's Township. I'm not here as a member of Sheriff's Department, but Department of Indiana Marine Corps League Toys for Kids Coordinator. I'm sure you've seen out and about, we've got all of our collection boxes out. We've got about 160 locations right now that we've got boxes out. I've got one, or boxes in both courthouses, Sheriff's Department at Hyler Building. So plenty of chances for employees and everybody in the county to donate. Our final pickup day will be December 16th. So if you want to donate, try and get it in by then. Then we can start passing out toys to the kids. You know, in years past, and I've talked to you guys about it before, like when we sent toys to Ukraine and Kentucky for disasters. You know, earlier this fall, we had a couple hurricanes pass up the east coast and devastate a couple states. Toys for Tots sent 10,400 toys to North Carolina alone for kids for Christmas. They got passed out already to about 2,600 kids. So each kid got about four or five toys. So we're already, we're trying to get stuff in place for Christmas. So I just want to pass that on to you and talk about our final pickup.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Public comment. Do we still have anyone else for a public comment? Hearing no one, we'll close public comment. Moving on to department head comments. Department head comments on Zoom?
Something I could mention that I just found out about today. As a member of the Fair Board for a long time, it came to my attention that the Farm Bureau, you know, the building where they have the milk, where you guys like to get a nice glass of milk in the hot weather. I mean, they removed the building, they're gonna keep it, but we're gonna move it for, be used for something else now, and they want to put a new building there. We'll be getting to more information about that, but they wanted me to mention that at least, that Farm Bureau is gonna have a new building. Probably still have milk, I guess, so.
Yeah, we're gonna, well, it's probably gonna be on the agenda, because what we're gonna do is we're gonna move the existing building to another location, but we'll get that on the agenda at the next agenda. Okay, closing department head comments. Moving on to request A. Consider permission for travel to Las Vegas, January 26th through the 29th. Steve Irick, adult probation.
The American Probation and Parole Association has two trainings every year, and this year in the winter training is in Las Vegas. I have six staff that are willing, wanting to go. We will use probation use fees to cover all the expenses. There will be no tax dollars spent on this.
Motion to approve, second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 And I'm also standing in for Judge Friedman tonight.
So let me just read it real quick.
Okay.
Commissioner, consider permission to approach the council for food baskets for adult, for problem-solving court. And you don't look like Judge...
No.
...Friedman.
I'm at my best.
He's better looking.
So yeah, every year, the Drug Court holds a holiday party for the participants in the program and their families. And I think she's just requesting permission to be able to provide food at this event.
Motion to approve, to go to the council for funding for that. Thank you for what you do with that. It's a great program. I've supported it since day one.
I encourage you all to come to any graduation you can.
I do.
Yep. Appreciate that.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second, and that's out of the Drug Court fund.
Drug Court budget, they've got the money allotted, so.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Hearing no questions. All those in favor say aye.
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 And since I'm here, probation department will be having a retreat in January at Red Mill. We'd like to provide lunch, coffee in the morning, but in order to come out of probation fees, but in order to do so, we need permission from the commission and of course, the council.
Motion to approach council for that, second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Alright, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for what you do.
Consider permission to approach the council for ARP funding for the town of Kingsford Heights in Wanatah.
Good evening, Commissioners. We're gonna talk about a little dirty situation we have in a couple communities that we're looking to rectify. We've been approached by the town of Kingsford Heights and town of Wanatah, who are in the middle of pretty substantive utility projects. And as you recall, the commission and the council had previously allocated a million five for the utility extensions between Michigan City and an interchange. That project timeline didn't fit with the government's timeline. And two noteworthy projects came up and we had some conversations with representatives from both communities. And just the representatives are going to come up and address the body here, but both projects would qualify under ARP. These are wastewater projects. Both are designed to do two different things. One is to reduce the cost to the residents of LaPorte County and two, to allow for more developable lots with water and sewer within the county. And with that, we're gonna bring them up in alphabetical order. I have representatives here from Kingsford Heights. Randy and Brian are here to answer any questions or talk a little more detail about the project. These are the experts, this is wastewater plant operators. So come on up and let them know what you need and what happened. One other, I'm sorry, one other item before they start. I just want the Commissioners to know that these are communities that have, on their own accord, started to address these issues and have allocated their resources first. So this is a good example of leveraging what these existing communities are doing and utilizing some available federal funds to help out. So that'll turn out to be...
My name is Randy Schwartz. Brian couldn't make it tonight. Board member Dwayne Art is here in his place. I've been the overall supervisor for the town of Kingsford Heights. In the last five years, the town has invested heavily in itself, well over $6 million. From new water mains to plant upgrades, wastewater and water, water mains. We have manholes lined. Other than that, they've been...
Where are they going with this?
The town has been... Shoot, I'm sorry. I lost train of thought.
So I'll try to help you out a little bit, because I did get to talk to Brian.
I can help you. He knows how to, he's a good talker.
But one of the things is that they, you did start doing some building there, correct?
Yes.
And so this is gonna be, give you the ability to do an expansion. Sure, you can come forward. And this is really to give you the ability to do the expansion, correct? Thank you.
The town has seen tremendous growth. In the last two years, they've permitted 76 new houses to be built. Projected, they can accommodate 500 new houses with some infrastructure already in place. You know, the wastewater plant. The wastewater plant is permitted by the state for 99,000 gallons a day. And if you look at our paperwork here that I gave you, the wastewater plant has seen a lot of updates. We've added a clarifier, we redid the headworks, added a new generator. But the hiccup at the wastewater plant, the bottleneck that is preventing us from taking in more waste is the mixed liquor tank, the aeration tank. And that's what you see pictures of there. That's our mixed liquor tank. It is at the end of its life cycle. If you see some deteriorated concrete. And we're hoping, speaking with an engineer, to revitalize this tank, add to it, or build a whole new existing tank to increase the flow capacity of the plant, hopefully by double, to 200,000 a day.
So can we entertain a motion to send them to the council? Sure.
Can I ask one additional question, so it's on the record?
Right.
So is that, if you were to get the spend from the county for art funds, is it for the aeration equipment at the facility?
It'll be for an increase in the capacity of the wastewater plant, yes.
And what is that, what estimates do you have for that project?
I would estimate...
Money-wise?
I would estimate around 500,000.
Okay. So that would, so that part of the spend would be the entire art money? Y'all wouldn't be putting any additional funds into that?
If, you know, if there's any money left over, we do have some distribution issues we could take care of, you know, some sewer main lining. All our manholes have already been lined and revitalized, but there is some sewer mains that need to be lined.
Thank you for permission for representatives from county fatics to go to the council for funding from ARP.
I'll second that and also point out what Mr. Reardon was saying earlier about the one and a half million coming back that was prior committed. With my second, I would caution the council that if that money has already been allocated out of the pool that had to be spent on infrastructure and we're looking at taking it out of lost revenue. I think the current lost revenue is about a million dollars left and considering the financial constraints that our council is under, I caution them against using lost revenue to fund this. But if the money's there from other prior commitment funds, as Mr. Reardon was saying, then yeah, this is an apples-to-apples transfer there, so.
That's the way we would see it in the auditor's office.
Yeah.
Town is growing. I mean, next year, we're putting in 80 houses again.
Currently, there's four contractors building houses in town right now.
And they're four local contractors. And that's what's so beautiful about it. I mean, we're really keeping our own employed and building houses and getting more folks in, so.
Currently, they're permitted for 76 houses right now. But they are gonna come back and their plans for, I think, 200 more.
And this is gonna give us the ability to keep it growing.
Yes, because, you know, the plant is running at, if you look at the paperwork, the plant is running about 80% capacity right now. And in two years, we'll be at maximum capacity.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any more questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Alright, thank you.
Your second.
Next up, we have the town of Wanatah. Our friends from the south have already started and done a preliminary engineering study. They've worked with Baker Tilly to identify the rate, what we call rate case studies, and they've done all that. And so in talking with Ryan, he says, "You know, what about, you know, does the county have any money laying around?" And I said, "Well, no, they don't have any money laying around, but they might have money for infrastructure projects." And as I mentioned, you know, Commissioner Haney pointed out, there was funding that was allocated for infrastructure projects and not into lost revenue. So that'd be a good, as you mentioned, apples-to-apples. So again, in keeping with leveraging existing funding and participation and how that works, and then talking about expanding the availability of buildable lots with municipal water and sewer. That's exactly what's happening, not only in Kingsford Heights, but that's where Wanatah is at. So they have a little bit, a different story. And any participation the county would consider in this will have a direct impact on lowering the rates. Because either they gotta borrow the money or you use cash to do it. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan and Chuck. And Chuck's the plant operator and Ryan's on the town council to kind of tell their story and let the commission know where they're at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ryan Higgins. I sit on the town council. We're here tonight to kind of go over what we have going on in Wanatah. So I've been on the town council. I represent the number one ward, which is north of 30. I've been on the council for about three months now. This was already rolling when I started. But what we have is we have to upgrade, actually replace our existing water treatment plant. Chuck's here to answer any questions and to kind of speak a little more intelligently on that plant. At the tune of about four and a half million dollars, to put that kind of burden on our residents is gonna probably double our bill just with sewer alone. So like Matt said, talking to him, you know, just looking at a couple different avenues to possibly lower the rates for our residents. And that's part of my job as a councilman, is to make sure that our community's safe and try to save our residents, you know, any chance we can. So going back a little bit, 2017, 2018, we invested around 550 to 600,000 dollars in our current plant. That included some sandblasting and coating of the tank, some steel repairs. Other updates included installation of new flow meters, upgrades of sledge tank. Other updates included installation of new flow meters, upgrades of sledge tank, new UV systems, some grinder replacement, new tin for our, for our plant that the, the building that the plant sits in, and some procurement for some miscellaneous lab equipment and various other upgrades. That thing's pretty much working on borrowed time, correct Chuck? So our new proposed plant, it will be all concrete. A lot of the equipment will be brand new. We're going to do about a 90% new replacement. Chuck and I spoke earlier, when they did the remodel or the update in 2017, 2018, they tried to use, knowing that we're going to have to replace the, the plant eventually. When they upgraded the equipment, we're going to use some of that equipment with the new plant to keep some of the costs down as well. So talking to Baker Tilly, now the proposed budget for the upcoming projects between four and four and a half million dollars, which includes the construction and soft costs. Terms alone, interest rates could be determined by Baker Tilly once they finalize the financing. Preliminary, preliminary estimates suggest anywhere from 30 to 39 dollar increase in our residents' bill. Talking to Jeff from Baker Tilly the other night. If we get the money from the county, we should lower the, the rates about 14%. So that's a big increase for a lot of our elderly residents and fixed income residents. That's, that's huge for them, so. Currently, we're at 1,000 gallons per day our plant runs at. We have 520 total customers. We still have around 28,000 gallons per day of flow, which potentially could lead to about 233 new homes. That's capable to go on that plant, so. Chuck, anything?
I was involved when we built that plant. I was on the town council at Wanata. And when we put the construction up in 91.
Can you move closer to the mic, please?
When we constructed that plant, I moved from the town council to help get the construction done and run the plant. I've been there ever since. That was a steel construction plant funded through SRF in 91. And it had a 20-year lifespan. And through a lot of work keeping it going, when we hit that 20-year cycle, being a steel plant and a wastewater plant, it, it was going to have a lot of fatigue. But we kept it going until about 2017. I was working on a new plant prior to COVID. We got right up to COVID and it was, it was dead, that we couldn't proceed. You know, what COVID did to the, to the ability to move forward. So we decided to do the rehab and started that rehab. And we sandblasted, tried to rehab the plant, but it was still steel. I was intimate to all that, watched the sandblasting, the pit fill. And, and I gave the council at that time about a 10-year lifespan. And we're about five years into that now. And we figure it's going to take at least two years to complete a new plant. And I want that new plant to be of concrete construction for the longevity. Steel's about a 20-year, concrete's more like about a 60-year lifespan. I'm looking for expandability. I'm looking for innovation. I'm looking for ways to save. I met with the engineer today and we really tried to brainstorm to get everything we can. We're trying to mix the plant with the components we bought five years ago, the ones that still have the life left in them so that we can keep the costs down. We're going to retain the existing labs. So we're really working to try to make it as affordable as it can. But it's really hard for Wanata to get money from any source because we just never quite fit for Okra or any of that. And we usually end up at state revolving loan fund. And we can never get any grant money to help the, the consumers. And it's always difficult when you have to go to them and say, hey, we have to triple your sewer bill. So we're really hoping that we can do whatever we can to kind of keep that cost down for them, so.
Make a motion for the.
Make a motion for the folks from Wanata to approach the council for ARP funding for their project.
I'll second that and just a couple of things here. The first is, I really appreciate this very thorough. I mean, we've got the documents from your financial advisor, we've got scope of work, we've got all the stuff here. So that, that level of, I appreciate that a lot. This is what the initial infrastructure side of ARP was meant to be. So my second still comes with a, I won't say an admonition, but a warning to the council that if for some reason we find it can't come out of that section, has to come out of lost revenues, I would caution them going into this next budget year that we may need every penny of that. But as far as from what, what we're hearing from our economic development, that coming out of that 1.5 million pot, that's, that's exactly what it should be. Also, just briefly, either for Mr. DiMartino or our auditor, mention to the council, I don't know if that 500,000 they gave to the city of La Porte, what pot that actually came out of? I think that actually might have come out of lost revenue. If it didn't, I don't know if there's any way we could maybe find a way to fix that before the end of this year and maybe find that other, that would be the last one-third of that component. But that, that's separate from this, but just a loss on my mind.
We expect that, that's really the council's position. That's not really for us, for the commissioners. I mean, so if we can just get, we've got a motion. And a second, if we can just get them pushed down to the council, greatly appreciate it. So all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for entertaining. Again, it's a good demonstration of cooperation throughout the county and the communities coming together and stepping up themselves and taking the initiative, allocating some of their resources to making improvements at their location. Just for the fun side now, that we've figured out how we would like to have everybody be able to flush their toilets. On the development side, you heard talk about lots. And so I, I, I look at it from this lens as well. And we, we're going to have the ability to create another 750 municipally served lots. And so using a modest price of 300,000 an acre, that's another 225 million dollars of investment in the county. While they're aware of this, we will continue to work directly with these communities and the local brokerage community to make sure we're promoting the availability of these lots and to make sure that they're maximizing the opportunities that the, the county would be doing by participating in this trans, in this transaction. So thanks very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Moving on, consider four sick days for EMS employee retiring in January. You don't look like Eric.
I'm not Eric. Eric's at a conference, he'll be back on Friday sometime. So we have an employee who's done nearly 30 years, retiring January 11th, I think is his last. He'll finish up the morning of January 11th. He's requested to pay down the remainder of his sick time.
Those two approve.
Second, thank you. And you verified those, all those dates?
Yeah, Karen, Karen checked with everything. I do know that he did submit a letter to, I believe, to the commissioner's office as well. Thank you.
Do you have a motion in a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to old business, consider opening class six material bid for highway.
Hi, so last meeting when we opened our material bids, one didn't make its way to us. So we're going to open it now and then I'll come back at the end with my recommendations.
But, you know, just want to make it clear that it, it was received in time. It just got stuck on someone's desk.
Yes, we apologize in the auditor's office. There was a misunderstanding. I thought a staff member had brought it over to the commissioner's office. We apologize for that. My chief deputy had knee surgery that week and my dog was dying that week. So it was, it was a difficult week, but no excuses, we apologize.
So this is from Michael Todd Industrial Supply. Instead of bond, they have the thousand dollars. And this is class six. Here you go, charity, most accept the bid and give to charities.
We're going to let her have the opportunity to look at it and then we'll call her back kind of at the end of the meeting. And then she can bring all the ones, all her recommendations. So we'll just give you an opportunity right now.
So I think we do though need a motion to show that it's timely received, though.
Second. Yeah, that, that's fine. We can clarify the record, it was timely received.
Okay, so can we have a motion?
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, we're gonna move on. We need to have a discussion on small animal.
So as you all know, in July of this year, there was a pump that broke. It caused a water loss incident. And during that day, Commissioner Muzinski called out La Porte County management to do some dry out and some mitigation work so we wouldn't have the building damaged. From that point in time, we made an insurance claim. The insurance adjusters have been out multiple times and I've been in discussions with the insurance adjusters. Travelers, the insurance company had estimated the total loss to be 246,048 dollars and 12 cents. The way insurance works in these first-party claims is that there is a total amount of, of the estimate. Then they provide you the fair market value. So they take off a depreciation amount, which is usually 30%, 25%, depending upon the age, and they pay you the actual cash value. So they tendered a check to us for an amount of 188,247 dollars and 82 cents. Once the, once the building is repaired and the bills are paid, then you get reimbursed the 32,000 dollars, which was the depreciation amount. The only cost to the county is the 25,000 dollar deductible that we have per claim. It's my recommendation that this is not a time and material bid, that we have the funds. I've negotiated with La Porte County management to do the work, soup to nuts, for the insurance proceeds plus the deductible or the amount of the insurance claim for the 246,048 dollars and 42 cents. Should they get into the, into the claim and there's something else that needs to be done, we would have to do a supplement to the insurance company and have them come out and take a look at it. So my recommendation to y'all is to process the 188,000 dollar check. Get a purchase order for the 246,048 dollars and 42 cents from La Porte County management. Pay them 188,247.82. When the job's halfway done, pay them the 25,000 dollar deductible. And then when the job is complete, we have to, we have to pay the 32.8 and then we're going to receive the 32.8 right back from the insurance company. That would be my plan. We've already been sitting on this for four months and the animal, the animal shelter is in really poor shape right now, so. Yeah, that morning that hap, that happened, that was a Sunday morning at early. I got the call and I went out there and to, to save the place from any further damage, everything was shut off. There was no lights, no water, no, no nothing. And we're pretty, pretty bad shape. They're moving animals out of the way and.
Can we have a motion?
I would make a motion for all of that that you said, so moved.
And second, and for those, just for the public, for those who haven't gone through the insurance process in this particular situation, like, like our attorney said, that's an insurance company that comes out, determine, and determined exactly what needed to be fixed, the costs for everything else. Everything's being done under that insurance company estimate.
Correct.
That's where, that, that's where the C came from. Yeah, the undisputed amount directly from the insurance company.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Can I continue now with the small animal shelter? That poor small animal shelter, as you all know, it was struck by a vehicle recently. And so I've opened a claim with Progressive Insurance and I just received an email from the adjuster tonight. And she's asking for some more additional information, photographs, the crash report. We've already sent them an estimate and she's going to need some clarification. They might have somebody come out and look at it, but it's a small enough claim, just over 12,000 dollars that they might just go ahead and estimate it without having to come out. So that's where we are on that claim.
Thank you.
So is there anything that we need to do at this point for that?
No, I was just informing you.
Okay. Okay, so moving on to new business, consider opening bids for Franklin Street Bridge.
Good evening, commissioners. Andy Skiat, Marques Electric. Thank you for involving us with the bridge project, project management. So I'm just up here to answer any questions on the bid opening.
Folks, we've got one bid.
Not surprising.
And this is from Metropolitan Steel Company. They're on the south side of Chicago and Chicago has a number of basile bridges. And it looks like it's just a partial bid.
And so how long did, was this bid or how long was this out there?
The, the bid was posted twice and then local news press. I had emailed the affidavit of the posting to all three commissioners, the county attorney and the commissioner-elect. And the plans were also posted on Construct Connect. We did a couple inquiries from other firms. I answered all correspondence, which I provided to the commissioners same day. Anybody that had a question, whether that was one of multiple firms that inquired or Construct Connect, I responded to all their questions same business day and got them their answers in a timely manner.
So I know that, you know, there's some folks that are not going to want to hear this, but the Metropolitan proposal, it's just under 400,000 dollars for a, a small part of the scope. But they're just, they're just saying, we'll act as a sub. That you need somebody to act as a general on this. So I'm going to give this to Mrs. Skiat. He can review it and then bring it back either later during this meeting, after Ms. Glazer or at a later date. So this information was submitted, but it's not submitted as a full bid. So there's no affidavit and there's no bond. So you're still going to need, need a general or somebody to manage the project.
Metropolitan Steel, they, they had a letter. I actually submitted that. We posted on the letter because, you know, it was sealed bid. So we wrote on the, right on the envelope that the bid was submitted by us. Metropolitan Steel, over the course of the solicitation, both phoned me and emailed me with multiple questions. I answered those questions in a timely manner. As their letter states, they reached out. They do a lot of the Basko Bridge work in Chicago. They reached out to multiple firms who they work with on those bridges and nobody wanted to touch this one. They said they couldn't find anybody to partner with. They were only able to perform one small portion. They turned in pricing, they turned that in to me. I asked them via email if they would turn that in, submitted. And they said they weren't comfortable with that because they couldn't even do enough of it to, to bid it alone. Their, their bid actually has 59 exclusions and 26 clarifications and is presented by a cover letter saying that myself and, and the team that we normally historically work with would have to do most of the heavy lifting in layman's terms. And they would love to be involved in the portion they can perform.
Guy, could you read that for the public? Because, you know, what I want the public to really understand is because there, you know, the whole idea that no bids, no bid contracts. We put this out for bid, it was out for bid for several weeks. We were not getting people to respond to submit bids. And here's one company that did it and they, you know, could you read just the top letter?
Sure. And just so you know, I know because I was, I know that they also reached out to a general in Northwest Indiana, Garrett Construction, and they didn't want to have anything to do with the matter just because it's a, a basile bridge and it's sort of unique. This letter is to inform you that MSI or Metropolitan Steel has made a good faith effort to subcontract the structural steel scope work to the general contractor for the above project to no avail. And the general would have been Garrett and they're a big outfit. I think they're Gary or Hammond. MSI has been informed that Marques Electric in Michigan City could fulfill any obligations for MSI that the general would have to provide as far as the other crafts and equipment needed to do the MSI work. Attaches a proposal to complete all the contract documents, field repairs that MSI will perform as long as MSI has awarded all the work as listed. MSI has extensive project experience in repairing and building Basko Bridges in Chicagoland area and considers itself qualified to perform the scope of work at the Franklin Street Bridge. So what makes it sort of difficult on our part is that there's a lot of permitting. You got to deal with the Coast Guard, you know, so, I mean, Marques has been doing it for years. So they know the path to follow. And the problem with like Garrett, they, if they were going to come on in time, they don't know the path to follow. So that's sort of the difficulty that was out there. I mean, you guys made a good faith effort. Y'all are going to have this, going to decide what you want to do, whether you're going to let this sit over winter and do no repair and try it again or whether. Or whether you're gonna try to do something uh for phase, the fourth phase of the bridge that's going on right now.
You know, we've been working on this bridge, like I said, it's be the fourth phase. It'd be a shame to, that all of a sudden to stop working on the bridge. Because we all know the ramifications, if the bridge doesn't work, we know that. It's a huge impact on the county and on especially Michigan City.
So, right, right. So this is, so you, you know what I mean? You have Metropolitan Steel giving you the areas, whether you all wanna appoint Marques Electric to put together the rest of the scope and present it back to you, cause now we don't have it as to cost, right? And then you can incorporate Metropolitan Steel's work into it. So it goes to, out to another, you know, vendor. You don't only have the same vendor. If you, if you decide that you're able to work with them and it all works for you. Otherwise, I, I don't have any other option for you to do so late in the year.
What is the percentage of work that they're gonna, that they're willing to?
I ca- I can't, I can't answer that. And the reason why I can't answer that, Andy, is this mixed work on both phases? Cause we put it out for a two-year scope.
So, um.
You didn't see it, so you don't know.
Obviously, the, the commissioner's decision, but in regards to timing, um currently on the north side of the bridge, the road grate is not even fastened anymore. Anytime the hole, anytime a car goes over the road, currently the grate bounces, cause it's detached from the structural steel. So as the maintenance contractor or the vendor, it is definitely my suggestion that some of those repairs are made. And we need to also all remember that this was a two-year project. This year was the much easier, if that's a relative term for the bridge, of the two. So if we're gonna rate them a one through a ten, we'll rate this year's work a three, next year's is a ten and it scares me. So um when we're looking at the path and what kind of involvement we're gonna get, we need to realize that next year is, is really tricky.
And so uh we're always against a timeline. Um, you know, whether I was on the council or now on the commission, it just seems like, you know, we, we wait to very last minute, parts need to be ordered. Um, we're always up against this time constraint. This year, what is our time constraint? Are we already behind that deadline? Should we have done this, you know, a month ago? Do we still have another month to play with this?
Well, we, we knew it was gonna be a, a process because of the bid process. If, if we would have got duly received bids and those could have been moved forward at, at this meeting, um, I think we would have been in good shape. But at this point, if the commission so chooses to, to repair the structure, then we need to circle back and develop a team. And then we need to get permitting and we need to get a plan. So um based on, we lost the time we've taken to develop scope and advertise. Now we're under the gun.
To me, what we need here is common sense. We get the same people working on the bridge for thirty years. We've always been satisfied. We've always kept it under budget. And we, we tried to get other people to, to, to uh work on it and this is what we get. One company is, well, we can do a little bit, but. And to me, I don't know. I'm just thinking that it could be in the way from getting it done the way we've always got it done in the past. Where the experts go in, they do the work, under budget, and we're all happy.
So, Mr. Di Martino, I, I mean, are we fulfilling like all the individuals who are out there saying no bid contracts? I mean, are, you know, we put this out to, to bid. We've spent the time. Where are we? Are we still with like, would, would there still be the opportunity to say that there's no bid contract beyond this?
Because because Andy was acting as a, a project manager. His, and none of his entities bid for the job. So you can't just sit here right now. I, I love you. I like, but I can't say to you, go ahead and take the job without a scope and money and the subs that you're gonna go ahead and, and, and.
Understand.
And you, you understand.
Understand fully, of course.
So where do we go from here? Do we, do we wait and, and take the chance of closing the bridge? I mean, because again, this is gonna have to be a collective decision.
It's gonna have to be a decision that you're all gonna make. Uh, but either way, you're gonna have to come back with a propos- if, if the, if the commission is okay with going forward with you and whether you wanna use Metropolitan or not. Which I would suggest if they, if they bring something to it, that you use the company that, that submitted a proposal and bid. You would have to come back at the next meeting and at least give us an idea.
A month, I would probably need.
At the last meeting of the year. Would that be enough, would that be enough to actually, do you gonna have to have the Coast Guard close? And you're gonna have that issue? Is that gonna be enough time? And I think the count, I think the commission needs to understand, could this be kicked off to next year or does this need to be done?
Not my decision. It depends. If the commissioners are okay with the road grate not being fastened to the structure, that's not my decision.
But aside from, aside from that.
Sounds like a safety issue to me. Well, I mean, y'all are gonna have to make a decision, but that's why I'm asking the questions. I'd like to see you come back, well, by the time you come back to our last meeting of the year, my last meeting, the, uh, the bridge will already be closed, right? It, it sounds like it's.
Close is December first, so it's actually gonna close in a couple of days.
Yeah, it's, it'll already be closed. And there it sits.
I, I think Mr. Di Martino's question, where he was going with that was, um, like for example, the bouncing road grate. That's, that's, that's something that sounds like to me is, is something that's timely that needs to be done. Um, perhaps trying to feel like you were trying to say what portions, you know, perhaps need to be done, like the grate now versus um if we build that into next year perhaps.
It's possible to give them a smorgasbord.
Absolutely.
So, so, so.
It could pickage.
There, there was items one fif- there was items one fifteen. So we intentionally made fifteen scope items. Because as you mentioned at the meeting where we were voted project manager, there was no budget established, fair reason. So we prioritize those items so that we could present them before you and decide, okay, these are really important and they're gonna cost X amount. Is that the limit of what the county leaders wanna go? Or do we wanna pick off a few of these easier one, easier ones that are less important easy also? Because either way, we have to close the road and shut down the structure. So with, with that happening, obviously up to the county leadership. We should at least take care of the priority. And if the funds are there, we could get some of the less priority because we're still gonna have the road closed.
Thank you. While, while I'm thinking about it, um, I'm gonna make a motion to show that that was uh timely received. That way it can go on the record.
I mean, I turned that in, just so we're clear.
Okay.
Meaning it wasn't brought by Metropolitan as a bidder. I turn that in on their behalf, cause they didn't wanna turn it in, just so we're on the same page.
So what is the motion?
I was just a motion to show that it was timely received for here tonight.
Okay, what are we gonna do, um?
You probably wanna vote on that motion, second it and approve it.
Yeah, for second, uh, second that. It was timely received.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 And now if you wanna give some direction as to next month, but.
Yeah, if, if we got issues that, it sounds to me it could be a safety issue. If we know we have a problem and we don't fix it, we're really liable then. I would like to see uh, uh, Marques come back, Marques Electric come back with their scope of what they need to get done this year. And a not to exceed uh amount. And we can still get it in this, this year, cause time's, time's ticking here. And it's, it's a shame that that's had to get sidetracked like this.
So we have a motion?
That was a motion, yeah. Alright, I'll, I'll second that.
So we have a motion and second. I just wanna, I, I do wanna just ask one thing. We have the festival of the lights in Michigan City and you're saying that the grate is loose right now. The bridge is down and it's closed as of December uh first. The festival starts, you know, right after Thanksgiving. Is there an issue? Well, we have all these cars going back and forth, because believe it or not, it's a huge attraction in Michigan City.
Huge.
Um, we have a lot of residents coming from throughout um our county and from surrounding counties to come and, and, and go drive through Washington Park. Is there anything that we need to do for that prior?
No, not at this time. So if the weather was below zero, like when we had the arid blast and the road buckled several years ago. That is actually very damaging to the structure. That weather's not predicted. So I, I would think that with that festival, we would wanna hold the closure until that's over anyways, if you decide to move forward. And just from experience, the tail end of that closure late February and early March is a much better time to work on that bridge than January, so.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Okay, we have uh Jay hopefully on soon. We have to consider project manager for Michigan City uh EMS base. Is Jay on, um?
He's on vacation.
He said he was gonna be on Zoom.
No, he's not.
So what do we do? Cause this was a request from Jay.
Mr. Sullivan's not here. We can't ask him about the other contracts either.
I have to, uh, motion to table this for now then.
So then we have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
No.
We can't move forward. So I, I'm gonna step down as president and, and uh second that motion to table. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Okay. Consider twenty, so you guys can have a seat. Consider twenty twenty-five maintenance contracts for facilities.
Good evening, Commissioners. Cheryl Listensky, Director of Building Facilities. So I am here to seek approval for the following twenty twenty-five contracts related to essential services for the, the facilities. So Otis Elevator, that's for the elevators in our county buildings. I also have Wildman. There are mat services in our buildings. Hatfield Pest Control. CL Vending Company, um, they provide the food and the snacks for the employees in the vending machines. LRS for the waste tra- trash service, excuse me. And Marques Electric for servicing our county generators. And um also our fire protection service, which I kinda would like to put that off to the next meeting, cause I have one more contractor giving me their bids um for the service. So I'm still waiting on another quote. So it would be the six that I listed.
So these get paid out of your own budget, so you don't have to go to council. This is just to approve our contracts, correct? Correct. Okay, so we can, uh, we have a contract to count.
Motion to accept the recommendations of the facilities manager.
Uh, I'll, I'll second for discussion.
So we have a motion and second, open for discussion?
I, I know she said you wanted to hold one over, because you were waiting for another uh quote to come in. Did, did, did you solicit? And I know, I think Otis, you kinda have to go with him, but for the others, did you solicit um other, other companies for each of those?
Um, yes, um, for the trash service. Um, I um went with LRS. They're like five hundred dollars lower um each month, which is like a six thousand dollar savings for the county. The rep is local. His responsiveness has been great so far. Of course, you know, I haven't dealt totally with him yet, but our previous vendor, I had a little trouble with their follow-up. Um, as for the other ones, I mean, Wildman Mats, um, CL Vending Company. Basically, we do, are not, the county is not charged for that. It's just a contract. If we um get out of that contract early, we would have to pay for any damages to the machines. Uh, all of the other contracts, um, such as Hatfield, Marques, um, their cost has not increased. And the service has been exceptional. So I didn't go and look for any other bids on those for that reason.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Di Mart- Di Martino, have you reviewed these contracts?
I have not.
Okay, I haven't seen them, uh, I haven't seen any of them either, uh, sent over. So since our attorney hasn't had a chance to see him or review them, uh. And I haven't, I'd make a motion to table this to the next meeting, or table this till we can be provided with information. Oh, yes, um. Good point, um.
No, that's just, that's just an amendment.
Yeah, yeah, I would make this a, as a amendment to your, to your motion.
So what, how about this? How about provide the contracts to me, provide them to whoever wants to see them? And assuming approval from me as to legality, then she can have the authority to sign them. Would something like that work?
I, I'd like to see him first to.
Put it on.
So we have a motion, um, but an amendment to hold off to the next meeting, you said? To table it?
Table the next meeting and, and get us the information.
Do we have a second on that?
No, I have no intention of micromanaging her, her department. I trust her to, to know what she's doing. I'm not gonna micromanage her department. I made the motion to accept her recommendations. That's my motion.
So where do we go? I mean, we can have.
Then, then there's no amendment. Am I able to withdraw my second then or no? No, cause it's already been made.
No, cause she seconded it for discussion.
Discussion, yeah, thank you.
So you can.
Okay, so all those in favor say aye? And this is, this is gonna be with approval of you reviewing the contract?
I didn't hear that.
So can we just have a motion? Can you amend your motion um for Guy Di Mart- uh, you know, you see, here's the problem. A lot of these contracts are just renewals. These are our vendors. These are the contracts that we get every single year. She shopped around. She found one of the contracts where, where she thought that she could save us a few dollars. She did the savings. Now we wanna, now again, I, you know, this shouldn't be a problem. If, if the department head comes in and they, they are working on their regular contracts. They save us a few dollars here and there. I believe that we should just be able to take it to the attorney, have him look at it, and then we move on. If we're gonna start micromanaging maintenance, then we're gonna have to micromanage every single department that comes in here and we don't do that. Um, we don't have Shirley coming in and laying out all her contracts for us in highway department. We don't have Steve Ira coming in and, and making sure that every vendor he works with, that we're micromanaging his departments. So I, I'm not quite sure what we're doing here, but we have a motion on the table. If you would just amend it to have, you know, the attorney look over it, I'd be okay with that.
I would, I would add pending, um, review by the attorney.
I'll now second that motion.
Alright, um, and ju- just for clarification, per, per, perhaps, um, you don't recall as, as, as you're new to the position. But the previous um facilities directors have always forwarded those contracts over to us and legal uh ahead of time.
Okay, I'll make sure I'll do that in the future. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, thank you. Consider amendment to bridge inspection contract. Again, um, Jay Sullivan is not present.
I'll make a motion to table.
I'll step down in a second because Jay needed to be here to, to explain these contracts.
Well, we got a letter to explain it. What happened, we, we already approved it. We approved the contract. But it didn't get to, I damn in a time with fashion, and they said, now you gotta add an addendum, because in other words, you gotta redo it. It's the same thing we've already signed, that it was, it was not timely.
Except, uh, there, there appears to be a change, but I didn't see the letter. The change appears to be in, in the, the term of the contract. So this comp, the new addendum goes from August first, twenty twenty-five to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. The prior contract, it can go that far, but I didn't see any letter, so. So I was just asking for clarification from Jay as to what this issue is, because it looks like this contract is a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars less than the other one. And so I don't know what accounts for the hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, because Mr. Sullivan has not gotten back.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to um, we have a motion to table and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Uh, consider proposal for election uh for auction contract, Charity.
Okay, so the auction is about the generator that we had removed from the Hanna Garage. The old one is sitting in our shop, just taking up space, so we figured if we got it put on uh online auction, then at least we can get some money back for it. Um, so Steve, oh, I'm sorry, Jim Lisinski came out and looked at that and some other items that was out there, um. So on top of the generator, Maintenance has that old pickup truck, um it's a two thousand and six that is um, from what I'm told, no longer roadworthy. So that could be put on the online auction also. He is having a um auction on December seventh at the Hanna Yard. It's his forum auction. Those two items can be listed on that auction um and be sold at that event. And then we also had um just sitting for years behind our salt barn, stuff from the old Michigan City Courthouse. Um, it was some bricks, um some wrought iron. In, that was some things that was inside, decorative pieces, um safe doors. Um, they had some condensers that Maintenance looked at, and those are no longer usable. They took all the parts off of them that they could use. Um, and he had um proposed having a separate auction online for those items to have like historical report value and maybe get some money back for that stuff, because it's just sitting back there like rot- rotting. So um if we could get approval to do that with those things and take them down to the, those two items to the Hanna Yard, and then have him um do the historical auction with the other items. Um, he has this contract here that I think you all have a copy of. Um, so it's up to you guys if you wanna do that with the items.
Good thing I did that. I'd make a motion to pending.
So today's the twentieth, it's gonna be the seventh. Aside from the auctioneer publishing, we have to publish within ten days of, you know, we ten, so we're gonna have to get that, this published.
Well, can we kick it out further? I mean,
Well, his auction.
That he's already.
It's the seventh for that forum.
Okay.
So you're gonna wanna get it published this week?
So, okay.
Who gets it published?
We get it published.
Okay.
And the auctioneer publishes it.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, but I I I do wanna explain this, because um a lot of this, these items that came out of the Michigan City Courthouse, these are um historical items. They are items that um I had sat and me and Charity went out there with um Andrew and why is the councilman not coming to my mind here?
Mark?
Mark Yagelski. And Mark had really was very passionate about getting these items out there. He thought that there was a lot of value to it. He thought that we would make some money on these auctions. And so there was a point where we didn't know where the items were, and you know, there was all kinds of, again, you know, the idea that corruption and that, you know, may have gone missing and that. We found all that, those items. And we also found the fencing, um the black fencing. He asked, did I bring this up? Um, the black fencing that was around the county home, the wrought iron fencing. We do have that. Um, we are not putting it in this auction. We, I'm currently working with FM um FM AC to see if maybe we can use it at the fairgrounds. I believe that that's something that's very historical. I I know a lot of people had a lot of interest in that fencing. Um, if we decide as a board at a later point to go ahead and put that up for auction, we can do that. But I just think at this point, we need to hold that fencing and see that if we can use it around our town before it just ends up in people's gardens and 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 used for decorative items in people's yards.
Can I ask one question? I know, but you brought up Mr. Yagelski. He's very, he's very passionate about the scrap metal. Do you still have that scrap metal there?
Okay, so this is our big pile last year.
Very passionate about the scrap.
Yes. The big pile last year was sold at the auction and won lots of. Now, since that has been cleared away, we have dumpsters now where we separate the pieces and once they full, they come and um pick it up and it's clear like every every time. So we do not have the big pile of scrap anymore.
Thank you.
Okay.
And so another thing I'd like to ask you um as our council, one of the questions that always gets brought up, like the different departments that are contributing to these piles are 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 putting, you know, like the vehicle from Maintenance.
They're not getting the money. It goes in the general fund.
Okay, well, I just wanted to put it out there for you to say it. So it's gonna go to the.
You get plenty of money from the general fund all year. They don't, they could get some back.
Highway.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on.
So we have recommendations from um the ones we opened last meeting and the one today. For class one, which is our crush limestone, we had two bidders, which is USA and South Lake Stone. Um, we're gonna accept both bids. They both had comparable prices, some lower than the other, so we'll use both bidders. The patch um bid, patch wrap materials, class two, we had two bidders, Reith Riley and Central Painting. We'll also accept both of those bids. And then we didn't have another bidder till class five, which was um for diesel and um unleaded fuel. We had one bidder, which was Triple J Mar, so we accepted their bid. And for signs, class six, the one bidder from today, Michael Todd, um will accept their bid. And class seven, culvert pipe and Garderelle, three bidders, um DEPCO, DEPCO metal culverts, St. Regis culverts and metal culverts. Um, metal culvert's bid came in late, so that's gonna get returned to them unopened. And we're gonna accept both DEPCO and St. Regis's bids. Um, DEPCO would be our primary bidder, and then St. Regis would be used as a backup bidder.
Thank you. I'd make a motion to uh approve your recommendations with obviously deference given to the lower uh, the lowest bidder when possible. And for the public's certification, we do that, so that throughout the year, if some supplier runs out of something, we already have another locked-in price or locked-in vendor to go with, so if need be.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Um Mr. Skiak, could you, are, were you able to review the contract? Did we have to bring you back up? Or no, we, no, we decided.
He's gonna come back next, he's coming back.
He's coming back, okay. So I just wanted.
The one from Metropolitan Seal was actually submitted by me, so they emailed it to me. I asked them in an email form, like to turn that in sealed, and they said that they didn't think that was appropriate, because it wasn't a complete bid. So since they did, the only person that we knew for sure they asked if they could be involved, I turned that in.
I just had it in the back of my mind that we were gonna call you back, so I wanted to make sure, okay? Um, we added two more things to the agenda. One was the shared ethics advisory. We did appoint someone at the beginning of the year, and uh they haven't been making the meetings. So they did contact us. Would you like to give a little bit of it?
Did you contact the, did you contact and ask Randy Novak to take that position? I'll make a motion that we appointed Randy Novak to the Shared Ethics Committee.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
So I'll step down and I'll I'll second that motion uh for discussion. So at this point, we're we're in November and we and we actually do appointments in January.
Do you do that appointment every year?
Yes, we do. So do you think it's appropriate? I mean, I, you know, I.
Are there any meetings between now and the end of the year?
I'm not sure, and that's the whole thing where we.
I'm not aware of any at this point, because of the holiday schedule. Normally, they meet, I think at the the beginning of November is their last meeting, if memory serves, but I could be wrong, maybe doing some different.
I guess if you have to appoint them to the remainder of the year, if there is a meeting, I mean, that's up to y'all. Or you don't have to.
Okay, so then we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, and our last item is a recent lawsuit. Would you like to give an explanation of that?
Well, I discussed it in exec session. Um, Mr. Saranak has sued Mr. Stabos over a reduction of a bill that he submitted, and Mr. Stabos is asking the county for defense.
But make a motion that Mr. Stab- Mr. Stabos hires his own attorney, and if he wins the case, he can go to the council and see if they wanna pay it. If he loses, he loses. That's my motion. Hire your own attorney.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second? For discussion?
I would second that for with a uh amendment uh to the motion that any individuals being sued in their personal capacity should be funding their own lawsuit then, just for consistency's sake.
So um was that item put on our jacket? What what, did it come through the Commissioner's office on our claims?
Well, there would be no claims, because there's no money.
So it was.
There's, there's been no, no attorney.
Not for the, not for the attorney fees. When the amount that he's being sued for is a deduction that he made on a bill.
Right, so.
So when the bill came through, it hits our claim socket, correct?
Yes.
And the claim socket was for the full amount?
The thousand dollars, correct.
So when the auditor made a deduction, did he clear that with the commission?
I wasn't involved with that. I don't know. I.
I'm here, if you have, if you're here, I'm here.
So again, I think we need to second, I'm honestly, I think we need to, because you're here in the capacity of our secretary. And so.
I'm not merely here in that capacity.
You're here as our secretary, sir.
That's your claim, that's not, that's not, that's not statutorily accurate.
Not gonna get in, not gonna get into it with you. You're here as our secretary. I would like to get further information, because again, I think that the huge difference is if it came through as a claim and we had and we, we can't go back and look at this right now.
Why don't I tell you?
We need to table this um request to the next meeting, so that this way we can see when the claim came through. Was it a claim? Did the commissioners approve a deduction on it or not?
What, what did I tell you? What happened?
So at this point, I would like to just have you.
We, we approved the original claim of the six hundred dollar. We approved that, and and it was paid. But when he took it out of the separate, a different thing, that never came before.
Actually, you did not approve that. Com- Com- Commissioner Mathias approved it without the other, without you, without Commissioner Haney. She took it upon herself. The next county attorney told her she did it illegally.
So again, can we look into this? Because again, I'm I'm not gonna have a discussion with the secretary. Can we, can we have a motion to table this?
I do appreciate being.
Okay, so, no, I mean, Mr. Lisinski made a motion, and I believe it was second.
I I I I made a motion with an amendment, which if that doesn't get a second, then both my amendment fails and Commissioner Lisinski's fails then.
And then you can entertain a motion to table after that if it fails, or it just dies on the vine?
So what was your amendment?
That anybody, anybody that's personally served, obviously.
Sued.
You're personally sued. Obviously, you guys are personally sued in a matter, have to pay their own attorney fees.
And so was the commission sued, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But that's, but 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 that that's the, you asked what the amendment was, and I believe that was the amendment, correct?
Okay.
Did I miss?
No, that's correct, yes. And I would say what's good for the goose is good for the gander, Commissioners.
You're the goat again, sir.
I sued personally.
You're out of, sir, you're out of order, sir. You're out of order, sir.
You're sued personally.
You need to be treated the same way as your treating.
You're out of order, sir. You're out of order.
Acting politically against me when I'm entitled to an attorney from this, this is the first time.
I'd like to have a five-minute recess.
History of La Porte County that someone has not been provided with an attorney.
We have a, we have a recess. Okay, so how do we handle this?
Don't you ask me about the nature of the dispute I'm having with Serenek? Why don't you ask that?
How do we handle this?
Well, you just called the recess. There was a motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? I second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Called the recess.
Hold on, you gotta call back in session. Let's, let's take a breath, because now I'm confused on what was pending. So Mr. Lisinski made a motion.
I second.
Well, no, Mr. Haney made an amendment saying that what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and obviously if anybody is served personally, they're responsible. Nobody seconded that, and then you called a recess.
Well, because we're gonna have to, we're gonna have our secretary screaming in a meeting. I mean, this is ridiculous.
Okay, after some reflection.
The auditor. The auditor of La Porte County, not the secretary.
But you are here in the capacity of a secretary. You are a secretary. You're supposed to be taking minutes for us, and you don't even do that. You you farm, you you farm that up.
I'm not gonna respond to personal attacks, Commissioner.
So Mr. Lisinski was, made a motion. Mr. Haney attempted to amend the motion, and then there was a recess called.
Okay.
Have we all taken a breath?
I'm good.
Okay, are we back on, are we back on the record? Gonna call the, back to order?
I'd like to call this meeting back to order.
Okay, so that's where we are right now. So.
Got a motion?
Motion, second with an ame- with an amendment, so in other words, he, he, Mr. Haney moved to amend your motion. So that's what's pending right now. Is there a second to the amendment?
Not me.
Okay, that's a, that's a no, there's no second. Okay.
So the amendment dies for a lack of a second, is that what?
Amendment dies for lack of a second.
Okay, well, can we vote on the motion?
The motion, Mr. Haney's motion, uh, Mr. Lisinski, I'm getting confused now. Mr. Lisinski's motion was that no. Mr. Lisinski's motion was that right now you go it alone and you seek reimbursement at a later date, should you be successful.
I'll second that motion. All those in, any discussion?
You are hypocrites. You are hypocrites.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay, hypocrites.
You need to, you need to stop, sir, because you're here as a secretary.
You are hypocrites. You're sued personally also.
Okay, um, call to.
Your own bills.
The uh, no, one more motion, the, the, I think it was last month. The county council did a a vote of no confidence in our auditor. I thought that was very timely and it needed to be said. I would make a motion that we also su- support a motion of no confidence
Displanted.
in our auditor.
Displanted.
I'll second that motion. Open for discussion? Hearing none, all those.
I think that um just, we've got uh roughly six weeks here left. You know, the current current makeup um here, and it's it's unfortunate that um we kinda continue to go down this path, as well as rules for some, but not for others. So it's unfortunate and.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. It's nay.
Your politics, both of your politics.
Second.
You should be ashamed of yourselves.
All those in favor for a tournament?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.